Good evening, everybody. If you could have your seat, please. Thank you. I would like to call this meeting to order. Will you all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Councilmember Primoroso. Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Thank you so much, Patty. Before we get started tonight on our agenda, I would like to take a moment to recognize some pretty extraordinary members in our audience today. We have Girl Scout troop number 24334 with us tonight from Alamanda Elementary School. And we are all so happy. Yes, please. To have you here this evening. They are fresh off of touring our fire station, as you can tell from the helmets, and even more career choices in fire. So we're excited about that. But most of all, we wanted to thank Bella, Cameron, Chloe, Ella, Eve, Evie, Harley, Izzy, Lydia, Madison, Sarah, Scarlett, Skylie, and Taylor for coming tonight. And I just want you amazing Girl Scouts to know a couple of things. You have three elected officials up here in front of you that are female. And I wanted you all to know a little thing or two about Girl Scouts. There are 58% of the women in the 114th Congress came from Girl Scouts. 75% of senators that are female also came from Girl Scouts. And 53% of the women currently in the House of Representatives are Girl Scout alumni. So you guys are maybe going to be up here one day with us. And then also, lastly, five of the six female governors right now are Girl Scout alumni. So we hope one day you guys join us in serving our local government. I will speak on behalf of all of our council. It is a wonderful, wonderful job. So if you don't mind, before we begin the meeting, we're going to take a photograph with our Girl Scouts and give them some really special certificates of participation that our clerk put together. So please hold one moment.
All right, everybody. I'm going to count down from three. All right, three, two, one, team.
Can I take one, too?
Right there for me, okay? Three, two, one, team.
Thank you, girls.
All right. Thank you all so much for coming tonight. Thank you all for your patience. I think we should start every meeting with a Girl Scout troop from now on, if we could. Oh, yeah, cookies next time. But yeah. Thank you. All right, next, we're going to move on to Resolution 17, 2024, declaring the results of the municipal election. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 17, 2024, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, declaring the results of the uniform municipal election held in conjunction with the presidential preference primary election held on March 19, 2024, providing an effective date and further purposes.
All right, thank you so much. Make it a motion in a second to approve Resolution 17, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 17, 2024. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All right, let's take it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much. We'll move right along to the reorganization of mayor and vice mayor. If the, um, let's see. Do I have to have the clerk read the? Do I have to read it first, Patty?
No, ma'am.
All right, thanks, Max. Okay, so I'm going to open nominations for mayor. May I get a motion in a second? May I get a? May I open the nominations for mayor, please? Do we have any nominations?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Chelsea to continue as mayor. I believe she's done an excellent job representing us at the city. And she has led the charge with mobility and made amazing strides. And I feel that she has plans for collaboration with municipalities to further that goal. And I think she would do an amazing job.
I'll definitely second that. It's rare that a mayor gets elected three years in a row to our council. And that just shows you how strong of a person that Chelsea is and a great representative in our community. So I will pleasantly second that motion.
Thank you. All right. So thank you both for the motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I will now open the nomination for vice mayor. Do we have any nominations for vice mayor?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to nominate Dana Middleton for vice mayor.
Thank you, sir. May I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. All right. May I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much. And now, what do we need to do, Max and Patty, to finish that up?
Now we'll read the title, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Resolution 18, 2024, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving, appointing the mayor and vice mayor for the city, providing an effective date and further purposes.
And now we need a motion and a vote for that mayor, for that resolution. Obviously, with Chelsea Reed being inserted as the mayor and Dana Middleton as the vice mayor.
All right. Can I get a motion in a second to approve Resolution 18, 2024, with the names, as Max said, Reed for mayor and Middleton as vice mayor?
I'll make a motion to move Resolution 18, 2024, with Chelsea Reed as mayor and Dana Middleton as vice mayor.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all so much for your kind words. A little verklempt. Are there any additions? And congratulations, Vice Mayor Middleton. Are there any additions, deletions, modifications tonight, Patty?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much. Next, we have announcements and presentations. I'd like to call our city engineer, Todd Engel, up to the podium. And he will provide an update on quiet zones, which we're all excited to hear about. So thank you, Todd.
Good evening, council. I am going to try to explain quiet zones, something that I don't quite understand myself. Okay, I gave this presentation about a year ago, maybe a little under a year ago, about where we were with quiet zones in the North County and where we were as a city with quiet zones. The only quiet zones that currently establish is in West Palm Beach. They had Phase 1 that went halfway through West Palm Beach. When Bright Line extended north, they continued that corridor. So they do have a quiet zone corridor. Moving north, Riviera Beach has applied for a notice of intent to establish a quiet zone, and they applied for a notice of establishment. They did receive that. However, during the 21-day period that they have between the notice of establishment and the actual establishment of the quiet zone, they didn't have the proper signage in. So that notice of establishment has lapsed. So they'll need to fix some signs and reapply for that notice of establishment. Moving north, Lake Park and North Palm have not done anything as far as quiet zones go. Palm Beach Gardens, we're going to get in more depth of what we've done. We have filed our notice of intent, but we've had some glitches on our notice of establishment. And you'll see that as we go through here. The Town of Jupiter has filed the notice of intent. They are in the process of doing the notice of establishment. As a matter of fact, we walk with them today as part of a diagnostic study with the Town of Jupiter today. They have some signage issues that they're working through. And they'll be probably doing it in about three or four weeks, maybe a month, of doing their notice of establishment for theirs. And Toquesta has done nothing yet on their quiet zones as well. So that's where we sit as the North County goes. So how do you calculate a quiet zone? I haven't been able to figure it out, but I have some idea of what goes into it now. So basically, if a train is coming and you're at a crossing, the horn sounds. It lets you know, hey, there's a train coming. So in order for the horn not to sound, there has to be enough bells and whistles, gates, barriers, and everything else at that place to warn pedestrians and motorists enough to let them know that, hey, there is a train coming. Be ready for it. And they do that by looking at the localized condition at each crossing and the corridor that we're trying to establish in itself, traffic volumes, train traffic volumes, accident history, and other physical characteristics that they actually have, medium lengths, medium heights, stuff like that. So that's how you do it. So your goal is to get a wrist without training horns under the wrist with the horns. And that's how they do not sound, the horns, is basically you have enough stuff at that particular crossing to let motorists know, hey, there's a train coming. Get out of the way. So this is what I presented you last time. We were trying to establish a quiet zone between Donald Ross Road and Kyoto Gardens Drive. And we were just under that risk. So our risk without horns was just under that risk. But we were going to do a few more things. We had some construction going on at Kyoto Gardens Drive that was going to extend a median. We needed an accident to come off, and we needed Bright Lines to come back and put in a fourth gate at RCA Boulevard. Those things happened. However, once we started to go for our notice of establishment, the Federal Rail Administration said we could not use Donald Ross Road, and we were really counting on the score of Donald Ross Road. So updating everything with everything that happened, with the median extension and the accident falling off, we still are above that horn risk. And so going further into the data, we're looking at Hood Road and Burns Road are our major culprits for that. The main reason is accidents, traffic volume, and the lack of a fourth gate. We do not have exit gates at those two intersections. The reason why we don't have them is because when Bright Lines were coming through and we were evaluating our safety measures, at that point, they're called supplemental safety measures. They told us those were not necessary due to the size of the medians on the exit side of both Burns Road and Hood Road. So the only thing we can do now, because the quiet zone calculator does not look at those particular medians and the length of those medians. It just doesn't do it. We have to go as what is called as an alternative safety measure, which is we have to petition the FRA to look at those and to assign a score to those or a reduction of a score to those and put it into our calculator. So if you look at Hood Road, we have a 577-foot median there. So a car would have to travel 577 feet in the wrong direction and hit a train as they see it coming there. So there's no credit in the quiet zone for that. Looking at Burns Road, it's also 470 feet. So they're quite long. And that's why the original fourth gate was not put in there. We are going to put in a fourth gate. We think that's the right thing to do. So the issue of that is time. We can only petition the FEC to do it. It's out of our control at that point. We do get to pay for it, but it's out of our control timing-wise. So we are going to petition the FRA with a supplemental safety measure and the alternative safety measure, which is Hood Road and Burns Road. So it's our opinion, and this is very conservative guesstimate, that they're going to give us at least a 40% savings on our quiet zone approach there for the large medians that we have in place. They're both six inches tall. They're both well over a couple hundred feet. So with that and redoing the calculator, taking that 40%, we think it's going to be more like 60, but we're going to assess 40, we actually will fall well below that calculator. And we'll finally have a chance to establish that quiet zone that we were looking for. Right now, we just do not qualify. So what does that look like? Well, if we look at today, we have to go do a diagnostic walkthrough with the stakeholders. We got FEC, Bright Lines, the county, the FRA, much like we did today with the Town of Jupiter, walk that to get their opinions, their comments. Then we prepare an application with their opinions and their comments in there. And then we submit to the FRA to establish that quiet zone using the supplementary and both the alternative safety measures that we have. So that has a six-day review period. They don't do anything with it. It sits for 60 days and waiting for comments. Typically, there's no comments on those. Then they have 60 days to review that. During that time, we can start to put in these signs that we're required to put in. So we have to look at the MUTCD, put quiet zone sightings up and down this corridor that meet that exactly. So once we get the ruling back from the rail administration of what our discount is on those quiet zones, we install the signs. We will prepare a notice of establishment. And then there's a 20-day window. Once that hits them, there's a 20-day window for them to walk with us to ensure that we have all our signage in correctly, that everything's done correctly, and it will be done correctly. The quiet zone will be established right after that. So that's instantaneous. 21 days, if we pass, it's established. No more horns being blown in there. Always remember that they can blow the horns at any time as far as the engineer is concerned for any other safety measures. So that's, this is all conservative. So we're looking sometime in November for that to be established. Those are the steps we have to go through because we currently just don't meet that quiet zone criteria. Any questions?
So the, I'm going to ask you some questions that I don't, I doubt you have the answers to either. But so quiet zones have, they're directly granted or whatever by the amount of traffic that goes over an intersection?
The risk assessment is based on the counts of traffic. Obviously, Hood Road, Burns Road have very high traffic volumes, where Richard Road has very little. So that's why we went over and got Richard Road, because it has a good score and it helps our average.
I don't think anybody cares if the horns are blowing during the day. It's why aren't we, why aren't we looking at how far those horns, how far the noise travels with the quality of life and the thousands of people when they're blowing their horn at 3:00 in the morning until whenever at night? Who cares if it's 7:00 to 8:00 or 9:00? But the horns travel so far. The people in Alton can hear them and everybody up and down Military Trail forever. So why does it have anything to do with traffic during peak hours?
This is just the FRA's requirement. I can't speak to the requirement. Just, we're trying to follow it so we can get this established.
Yeah, I'm just carrying a general complaint on who people don't want to hear horns at 3:00 in the morning when there's not a car on the road.
Understood.
So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to thank you for the update because besides the request for pickleball, quiet zones is the number-one comment that I get. I get emails daily, as you know. I get a lot of calls. I can't walk my dog without someone asking me, when are we getting quiet zones? So I appreciate you giving us an update. And if you have any other news in the future, I'm sure everyone would love to hear any, only if it's good. But I do appreciate it. And people do care about the horns, whether it's daytime, nighttime. I think because of Bright Line coming so frequently now, everyone all of a sudden realizes that there is an FEC railroad right near their neighborhood, and it affects a lot of people. So I appreciate it. And your endeavor for trying to make this come to fruition and the whole team that's doing this.
Right. And Todd, thank you so much for all the work staff has put into this. I know you guys walk those trails, the train tracks all the time and are constantly out there. Will the residents be able to get some of this information on our website?
Yes, we're currently updating that, the website, based on the information. We met with the Federal Rail Administration today. So we walked with Jupiter. They came back and sat with us for a couple hours.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you for constantly making sure we have access to this information. You're doing a great job. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, anything else? No? Thank you, Todd. Thank you so much for that. Next, we're going to move on to comments from the public. I do have one card for an item not on the agenda from Mr. Bob Minkowitz. If you'd come up, you'll have three minutes to speak, sir. Thank you so much.
Bob Minkowitz from unincorporated Palm Beach County. I stand here to speak truth to power, specifically your abuse of power with respect to your attempts to annex unincorporated communities of Palm Beach County into your city of perfectly plastic Palm Beach Gardens. I'm specifically talking to city councillors Chelsea Reed, Carl Woods, Marcy Tinsley, Roberto, excuse me, Robert, Primoroso, Dana Middleton, city attorney Armex Lohman Jr., Assistant City Manager John Bowman, especially Deputy City Manager Lori Laveria. Lori Laveria, who was fired from her position as city manager of Boynton Beach for doing not-good things. Not a few years later, she has to face the Palm Beach Gardens annexation plan, and not in good ways. I think Lori Laveria may be a good person, but she is in the wrong profession.
Excuse me, sir. You need to address me directly, if you could.
I'm sorry. I only have three minutes. And I couldn't do this, I couldn't memorize this in, to get it done in three minutes. So I'm sorry. I'm doing the best I can.
Thank you.
And you're going to have to refine your comments, the comments about the annexation or the council. You're not going to stand here for three minutes and conduct personal attacks on people. So if that's part of your discussion, you can omit that.
Do I have, is there free speech in this room or not?
There is, sir. But generally speaking, Robert's rules asks you to address the mayor or the person with the gavel. So I'm just asking if you could address me. Usually, you address the person who's running the meeting. So you're welcome to tell me all of these things directly. But I wish you would specifically come at me. Thank you.
I understand. Well, when I was here in the meeting, it was a unanimous vote by the city councillors. You were all in agreement on this activity. So I'm addressing all of you. Is that okay? Okay. Can I get back to? So I'm going to review what we went through. I'm not getting to say the points that I want to make. What you all put us through, a whole community of thousands of people, was not fun, and it was not a good thing. Okay? And the way you went about it was really, really bad. There was no support from either your own taxpayers, your community. There was no impetus from them. The people from our communities that came here unanimously in two meetings said, we don't want you to go forward with this. You insisted on going forward with it. And when you did, the information you provided to the public and to the news people was not accurate. It was half-truths. You said, oh, a bunch of people are going to get their taxes reduced. But you failed to mention, although it was in your reports, in your mailings, there was no mention of the future increases in taxes due to infrastructure improvements. No, there wasn't any of that. There also was no discussion about, although it was funny because you said, oh, your communities are going to be just fine. You don't have to worry about zoning and building codes. Nothing's going to change until you try to improve your property. Then you have to fall under Palm Beach Gardens zoning regulations. And oh, by the way, your building permits cost a lot more than Palm Beach County's. You charge a percentage of projects, not charged in Palm Beach County, not mentioned in any of your material. Okay? So you're telling half-truths to the people you're trying to annex to the news media, not a good thing. People are opposed to it, the whole thing. You want to go ahead anyway.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments, sir.
Sure, I will wrap them up right now.
You have about 15 seconds.
If you give me a minute, I'll just catch up to my last statement.
I have...
15 seconds. I served in the U.S. Army for 35 years and six months and never expected the single greatest direct threat to my freedom would be five city councillors and their administrators.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. If you'd be so kind...
Don't thank me for my service. You're not welcome. You abused the power that freedom gave you.
You're done?
God bless America.
And you can be quiet or be escorted out?
What I'd like to say is, on behalf of our city council, we were presented with an opportunity for a 20-year plan to go to the voters, to go to the 8,500 people affected by this. And we allowed the voters to vote. That is what we did. We are a representational democracy, and we left it to the 8,500 people offered annexation. And we will stand by democratic process. Thank you. You may...
Your proposition got defeated by 93%. 93%.
Move him. Thank you. All right, next is the city manager report.
I wasn't going to give a city manager report, but I'm sorry, he's not here to see this. This whole process goes through regulations. The state requires us to do things. We were asked, over the years, many times, to look at annexation. So when the timing seemed right, we looked at annexation. We did a feasibility study, which we're required to do by law. We did an urban services report, which we're required to do by law. We did everything through the process according to the law. Our facts and our figures, we stand by. Just because someone doesn't understand them isn't the point. Just because someone doesn't understand them isn't the point. That's their point. They don't understand it, whoever he is. He doesn't understand it. And to make false accusations is just ridiculous. This was an emotional plea. He has no facts. Our facts stand for themselves. We have the responsibility and the legal requirement to give the facts. We took our finance officials' calculated taxes for any one individual who came to them, one-on-one. So this attack on the council and staff is uncalled for, and we did, as you point out, take it through the democratic process and allowed everyone to vote, their voices loud and clear. Fine, we're moving on. Apparently, not everyone has the ability to move on.
And just as a matter of clarification, if I might, as in defense of my council members, as City Manager just said, this process was governed by Chapter 171 of the Florida statutes, and it was followed to the letter. That's my job. That's what I'm responsible to do, and we made sure that that exactly happened. It's quite clear by the vote that a lot of people chose not to annex into the city, and that's fine. That was their choice, and as the mayor said, it is a truly democratic process in that they actually have direct effect on what happens by their vote, instead of voting for someone to make decisions for them. They voted, their vote was heard, and it happened the way it happened. This process is established by the Florida Legislature. This council had no choice if they were going to consider annexation to do it any other way. So when anybody says anything else, it's either out of ignorance or they're knowingly lying. It's simply just not true. They were presented, this council was presented with five ordinances. They reviewed those ordinances. They were all legally sufficient, and they decided to vote on them. That was their legislative prerogative, and they did so, and they put it to the voters. This kind of emotional diatribe filled with ignorant comments has no place in a public meeting, and I personally am offended by the fact that somebody wants to stand up here and attack my council for following state law.
You know, I'm going to say something because I can. I'm actually okay with leaving the city the way it was. It was fine before, it'll be fine after. Every one of those people, when they step out of their house and they drive down their street, they're in the Palm Beach Gardens. When they walk out their door, they're in Palm Beach Gardens. When they go shopping, they get their gas, they drive down the street, they go to work, they're in Palm Beach Gardens. So, and I went to multiple meetings, multiple phone calls, multiple emails, just like you guys, and the only thing we did was offer an opportunity for them to come into the family of Palm Beach Gardens. There was no underlying cause. We don't need their money. As a matter of fact, their money would have been reinvested into their community. So I'm happy with the way it went. I didn't even blink an eye about it. But the main thing is, is when they leave their house, they're in Palm Beach Gardens, and that's the end of it.
Anything else? All right. Thank you all so much. We're going to move on with our agenda, so we're going to move on to our consent agenda. So do we have anything being polled from the agenda tonight, council? All right. Seeing nothing, I'm going to, see, let's take it to vote. So let's look to pass our consent agenda. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. Consent agenda passes. We're going to move on to our quasi-judicial hearings. Tonight, we're holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Ordinance four, 2024, second reading and adoption rezoning to change the underlying zoning designation. Resolution five, 2024, planned community development or PCD amendment. Resolution six, 2024, site plan approval for parcel A of the Simron Cove Planned Community Development, PCD. Resolution 16, 2024, Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center Master Signage Program modifications, and resolution 24, 2024, Christ Fellowship requesting to modify their signage plan. This means that the City Council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in this official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan on testifying this evening or wish to offer any written comments, please fill out a card over here to my right and give it to our city clerk over here on my left. And the city clerk will now swear in any persons or all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases. Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Thank you. Ordinance number three, ordinance number four for 2024, resolution five for 2024, and resolution six for 2024 will be a combined presentation. The city clerk will read the titles separately, and each ordinance and each resolution will be voted on separately. Since ordinance four, 2024, and both companion resolutions are quasi-judicial, ex parte will be given after the public hearing is open for ordinance three, 2024. If the clerk could please read the title.
Ordinance three, 2024, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a large-scale amendment to the comprehensive plan use, future land use map in accordance with the mandates set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, specifically Section 163.3184 at Siquez Florida statute, pursuant to application number CPMA-21-09-000032 in order to change the land use designation of 50.58 acres more or less, known as Simron Cove from mixed-use MXD with bioscience research protection overlay, BRPO, to residential high RH, the subject property being located east of Central Boulevard, approximately 0.23 miles south of Hood Road, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, and other reviewing agencies, providing that the future land use map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, an authoritative codified, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty. I'm going to open the hearing. Let's do ex parte. Does anyone have ex parte regarding ordinance three, 2024?
I hope we have to ex parte three, but I'd...
Oh, sorry.
If we're doing four at the same time...
Doing this combined, I guess we may as well. My fault.
No, it's fine. I'll ex parte. I have, I spoke to Bob Schaefer prior to the first reading.
Anyone else?
None.
None.
All right. And I have none either. Has anything changed since the first readings?
No, Madam Mayor, no changes since February 1st, when the project was heard overall as one project, ordinance three, ordinance four, resolution five, and resolution six together. Since that first reading at February 1st, we did send the land use amendment to the state for review, and we received no comments.
Oh, excellent. All right, great. So let's, does anyone need another presentation for resolution three, four, five, six? None? All right. So let's, we don't have any comment cards on these. No one to call to the podium, so let's close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second to approve? We'll start with ordinance three.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance three, 2024.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you so much. If the clerk could please read the title for ordinance four.
Ordinance four, 2024, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property known as Simron Cove, such property being comprised of 50.58 acres more or less and located east of Central Boulevard, approximately 0.23 miles south of Hood Road, providing that the parcel of real property, which is more particularly described herein, shall be rezoned from planned community development, PCD, overlay with an underlying zoning designation of mixed-use MXD, to PCD overlay with an underlying zoning designation of residential high RH, providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authoritative codified, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty. Let's open the hearing. The ex parte would be the same for ordinance three as it is for ordinance four, 2024, so we have nothing else to say, and nothing else has changed except for the application being submitted with no comments. So we do or do not need a presentation on four. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second to approve ordinance four, 2024, please?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance four, 2024. Second?
All right. Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance four passes five-zero. Moving on to resolution five. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution five, 2024, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an amendment to the Simron Cove Planned Community Development, PCD, to modify the master plan, design guidelines, and PCD landscape buffers. The Simron Cove, PCD, being located east of Central Boulevard, approximately 0.23 miles south of Hood Road, as more particularly described herein, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. Again, ex parte was done under ordinance three, 2024. We don't have any cards. Again, every presentation's been done. Doesn't look like anyone needs a presentation, so I'm going to close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second to approve resolution five, 2024, please?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution five, 2024. Second?
All right. Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I do want to declare that I did have the same ex parte, just in case.
Thank you.
So it's on the record from...
All right. Yes, so the same ex parte from ordinance three was done. Motion passes unanimously for resolution five. Thank you all so much. We're going to move on to resolution six, 2024. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution six, 2024, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan for parcel A of the Simron Cove Planned Community Development, PCD, to allow 221 multifamily residential units, including 22 workforce housing units. The Simron Cove, PCD, being generally located east of Central Boulevard, approximately 0.23 miles south of Hood Road, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you so much. I'm going to open the hearing. Again, ex parte was done under ordinance three, 2024. We have no comment cards. Presentation has not changed. We don't have anyone asking for a presentation, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second to approve resolution six, 2024?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor, to approve resolution six, 2024.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Lovely. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for resolution six, 2024 unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Patty. That was a lot of talking for you. Moving on to resolution 16, 2024. Guess what? If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 16, 2024, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an amendment to the Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center Plan Unit Development, PUD, to update the master signage program. The Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center being located immediately southeast of the intersection of Burns Road and Gardens East Drive, as more particularly described herein, providing waivers, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty. Let's open the hearing, and I know we have some ex parte, but I'll start down here with Marcy, then go to Carl, and then to Burt. So, Marcy?
No expartes.
All right. Carl?
Negative.
All right. Burt?
Yeah, resolution 16, 2024, I will not be voting on. I currently serve on the Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center Governing Board. I have no financial gain from this, but again, will not vote just from a conflict standpoint.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I also am going to have to recuse myself from voting on resolution 16, 2024, because I'm on the governing board of Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. We'll excuse you. And I do not have any ex parte, so I see that we have Lauren Sands, Urban Design Studios, at the podium. If you could go ahead and give us a presentation, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and council members. For the record, Lauren Sands with Urban Design Studio here tonight on behalf of the owner and applicant. Before I begin, congratulations, Madam Mayor, again, on your reappointment, and Vice Mayor Middleton, on your appointment tonight, even though you're behind me. You can still hear me. Tonight, we are here to discuss some improvements to Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center. Over the last year or two, they've had ongoing interior and exterior improvements. The interior improvements are near completion or already complete, and the exterior improvements, there were two phases, too. The first portion of that were some facade improvements. For those of you who have been out there, there's some new metal paneling that's on the buildings. And the second part of those exterior improvements are signage. So the reason I'm here tonight is to talk about all of those signage improvements.
Lauren, before you do that, I apologize. I did not ask if you had been sworn in.
I have been sworn in. I'm sorry. I forgot to state that. I'm sure we're all very familiar with Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center, 22-acre PUD on the corner of Burns Road and Gardens East Drive. I'm showing you this map because we're going to look at a few maps tonight to just give you context on where the signs are throughout the site. The request in front of you tonight is for a PUD amendment. This is to modify the master signage program. I'm going to break out the presentation into the sign types. I'm not going to click through all 23 signs. Don't worry. We're going to group that for brevity tonight. The request with the PUD amendment is also for waivers. I'm going to walk you through what those four waivers are. The first portion we're going to talk about is the ground signs. Ground signs are located along Gardens East Drive and Burns Road at the main entry drives. They provide, for the most part, directional and emergency information for the medical center, and all of the sign locations are remaining in place. We are refacing them, redoing some landscaping. To give you some context for what's out there today, there's a lot of issues with the signs. The coloring doesn't match. There's stuff in front of the signs. There's toe signs in front of some of the signs, landscaping conflicts. So we're coming through, the Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center wants to take this opportunity to really just revamp all of this as part of their master improvements. On the left, you have an example of some of the conflicts that are out there today with the toe sign being right in front of the sign. It obviously is creating some issues when you're driving around, and you can't make your way around the medical center. On the right-hand side is the example of what we're trying to accomplish with this. There's increased emergency lettering height. We're adding an architectural cap on the top metal paneling to match the facade improvements that are already complete and functional today. So this is the example of the first ground sign. This is your main sign on the corner of Gardens East Drive and Burns Road. We are improving the landscaping from what's out there today, refacing it with a new logo and new design. This new logo and design will be consistent across all of the new signage. We are also proposing architectural features, which is not something you typically see on ground signs. So it's something the medical center has done a great job with, providing with this to make sure that there's a consistent theme throughout their center as well. Ground signs two through seven, I'm going to lump all those together. We're increasing the emergency letter height on all of them, which is a big bonus, big safety improvement as part of this. We are refacing all of the ground signs with the new logo and the new design. We're cleaning up the arrows to make sure they're all consistent. The coloring on all of these signs will now be consistent. And of course, you have that new architectural feature, that architectural cap on the top, as well as the metal paneling, which is going to be consistent across all of your ground and directional signs. The directional signs are located internal to the site on yellow in the screen. These also provide emergency and directional information, but they're just smaller than the ground signs. All of these signs are remaining in the same location as well. We are just refacing them, providing the same improvements that we are on the ground signs. These are some examples of the directional signs. You have some similar issues here. The text doesn't match up, the coloring's mismatched, and I give the medical center a lot of credit. We have Christina in attendance tonight. When she jumped on the project, she said, "Guys, I think we could do an even better job." And we were already in process with staff, and she's like, "I think we can clean this up even more. I think we can provide even better directional information." So halfway through, I've got Riva next to me here, too. We decided to do that, added even more features. So even our directional signs have those architectural elements, which is not something you see at all. You have the same architectural cap and the metal paneling at the base, new lighting where it's needed to light up those signs and make sure that all times of the day, people can make their way throughout the medical center. There are six wall signs. There are two new wall signs. Believe it or not, there is not any wall sign visible from either Burns Road or Gardens East Drive for the medical center. So obviously, coming through these improvements, they want to make sure that there's visibility on two pretty important streets within your city. We are proposing to modify one of the existing signs, which is that outpatient entry sign, which we're going to look at in just a moment here, and there are three signs that we are not changing as part of this petition. The first wall sign is your existing entrance. They are refacing that to be green to match the new logo and redesign, and they are adding the logo on the left-hand side of the existing sign. The second new wall sign is for the main building. It'll be a large wall sign on the left-hand side of the main building. We are requesting a waiver for this, which I'll talk about in just a moment here. And we are also proposing a new sign on the medical office building. Currently, there is not a wall sign at all on the medical office building. For those of you who have been out there, you probably remember the behemoth of a ground sign that was out there, that is no longer there today. So they are proposing this in replacement of that, so that it is... and Gardens East Drive. The medical center use is unique when it comes to signage. Most codes and the City of Palm Beach Gardens code doesn't really address it, so we have to get a little creative with what we're proposing. So we are requesting four waivers. The first is for the base height of all of the ground signs, except for that main one on the corner of Gardens East and Burns. We are requesting to reduce the height by 4.2 inches for all of them, for signs two, three, four, five, and seven, and then by 5.4 inches for ground sign six. That one's just a little bit larger. But with that, we are improving the landscaping around all of there, making the landscaping consistent with all of the ground signs, which today, some of them don't have landscaping at all. So it's a big improvement, and that combined with the architectural improvements, they're confident that they're providing a good product, these ground signs. The second waiver request is for the copy area for one of the directional signs. Nine of the 10 directional signs meet the copy area requirement, even with all of these architectural improvements. This directional sign, for some reason, was just made larger than the rest of them. So we are just requesting a waiver for that one so that we can make sure to provide emergency lettering height that's visible for people, and also still provide all of the directional information for their patrons. The third request is for an additional primary tenant sign in the main building. Again, this is just so that it can be visible from both of the main roadways surrounding the medical office building. They are attaching this to the new metal paneling that's already installed. It'll be a nice product that's visible, they've done a good job in installing the landscaping in anticipation of this sign to, again, make sure that when people arrive at the medical center, they know exactly where they are. I actually found it quite surprising, as we were moving through this process, how many people get there but don't realize they're at Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center. Some people, when there's an emergency, they're just trying to get to an emergency room. So something very important that I did not realize. And the last waiver that's being requested is for the copy area for both of these two new wall signs. We are requesting to increase the copy area by 99.2 square feet for the sign on the main building, and then 81.5 square feet for the sign on the medical office building. Again, this is just for visibility purposes from those two main roadways. We do have staff recommendation of approval on this PUD amendment, as well as all four waivers that are part of this request. We do have the unanimous approval from the planning and zoning board, and I just want to say, working with Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center on this, on both their facade improvements that are already done, and all of these signage improvements, I think they're providing a great product that will really clean up a lot of the issues that they have at the medical center. So with that being said, thank you. I'm here for any questions. Christina's here if you have any operational questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sands. Do we have a staff presentation this evening also?
I have nothing to add, and staff recommends approval.
Right. So we don't have any comment cards on this, so let's go ahead and close the hearing. And looking for a motion and a second from either one of you two.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 162024.
I'll second it.
All right. So any discussion or questions at all?
No. I 100% supportive of this. Wayfinding, especially for emergency purposes, is super important. Having just been there not that long ago, I was able to, I knew that this was going to be on our agenda, and I did look around, and I do 100% agree that there is a need for this out there. So I'm glad that you guys brought this application to us, and that staff has found it sufficient for approval. And in addition, this has absolutely nothing to do with this, but just as an FYI, when I was there, your south parking lot was like totally underwater, you might want to consider cleaning out your catch basins.
All right. Well, thanks, of course. Yeah, I love it. Carl, you good?
I support everything she said, except for the water problem.
He's teasing. All right. Thank you so much. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 3-0 for Resolution 162024. Thank you so much for your presentation. We're going to move on to Resolution 242024. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 242024, Resolution, the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an amendment to the Christ Fellowship Church North Campus Plan Unit Development PUD to update the master signage program. The Christ Fellowship Church North Campus PUD being located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, approximately 0.75 miles west of Military Trail, as more particularly described herein, providing waivers, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date, and further purposes.
All right. Thank you so much, Patty. I'm going to open the hearing, and we're going to start with ex parte for Resolution 242024 regarding Christ Fellowship, and we'll start with Carl.
Dana?
No.
None.
All right. I just received an email from Joan Altwater.
Okay, lovely. All right. So we have Zach, I'm not going to pronounce your last name properly.
Sarah.
Thank you, here at our podium, and I, excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay, great, thank you. And if you could go ahead, from Cutler and Hearing, give us a presentation, and have you been sworn in.
Yes, thank you, Council. My name is Zach Sisera with Cutler and Hearing in Jupiter. Just for the record, I have been sworn in. I'm here on behalf of Christ Fellowship Church. We are proposing an amendment to the master signage program and five individual waivers. So to go into more detail for this proposal, we are proposing 22 new signs, so this is new signs on a new location, and 23 existing signs to be replaced. A building directional sign, wall sign, directory sign. A building directional sign, for the waivers, for the building directional sign, exceed maximum copy area. Sorry, I'm a little under the weather today. Exceed maximum signs on site, and exceed maximum height. And then for the directory signs, exceed maximum distance from primary structure. And then for the wall signs, exceed maximum signs on site. Hold on one second. I just need to grab a water real quick. I appreciate it.
I know, it's sneaky. We can drink water up here, so you guys are just sitting up there. Thank you, take your time.
So if you're unfamiliar with the site, it's on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, just east of Ball and Alice Drive. And similar to the last presentation, I'll go through each sign type, but not each sign individually. So sign type B, this is all we're doing, is just refacing the sign, nothing structural at all here. These are three existing signs. Sign type C, the same exact thing. One existing sign, just simply to be refaced. Sign type D, this is the majority of our proposal here, 15 new signs, the copy area ranges, but for the graphic to your left there, that is particularly what it will look like. Just the copy area may vary depending on the text. And then seven existing signs to be replaced, so removing those signs and then installing these signs here. Most of these, and this entire proposal, are not illuminated. And then sign type L, this is a wall sign, three new wall signs, and then 10 existing signs to be replaced. So this copy area varies drastically, so this could be an accessory entrance to a building versus a main entrance, and same thing with the existing signs to be replaced. And then sign type M, this, actually, we collaborated with the fire department, this was a recommendation from them to install two, or actually four total campus maps. So we have two attached to the building, and then two ground signs. So this is the building wall sign here, or the directory sign for the campus map. And then sign type N, this is the same exact thing, just installed on the ground. And then just to go into the waivers here. Here, sorry, one second. Okay. So the existing signs are from the previous approval, which is actually the initial submittal for the signage program, which is back in 2009. So this is simply to just update all the signs. The applicant has committed to install four Level 2 EV chargers on the site, that'll accommodate eight cars. And then this is just really to upgrade the site, to enhance the wayfinding, and just to update the existing signs as well, too. And then, please note that none of the signs on this application can be seen from the road. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Do we have anything from staff?
Staff has nothing to add and recommends approval. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I actually do have a comment card, so we're going to go ahead to public comment, but stay close by, okay?
Yeah.
All right. So if Joan Altwater could come up, please. Ms. Altwater, you're going to have three minutes. If you'd be so kind as to state your name, your address, and if you've been sworn in, which I don't believe you were, because I think you came a little
I'm sorry.
We are going to ask you to be sworn in by our clerk before we have you give your three minutes. Okay, she's right over here.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I hope you got?
I do.
All right. Sorry. So now you get to say your name, your address, and you get three minutes.
Joan Altwater, 9180 Cypress Hollow Drive, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, 33418. So I'm here as a resident of Cypress Hollow, and also my neighbor Lola Phelan has asked me to make something, you know, bring it up before the council. We think it's great that the signage is improving. We always are concerned about traffic flow, and we see that as a good thing to move traffic swiftly off of Northlake and onto campus. The concern we have is about the EV chargers. It's great, we're talking about sustainability and green energy, but my concern is where the chargers will be located, because we are, our community, is just to the west of Christ Fellowship Church, and we have had some issues with noise and people in the past. So we are a residential neighborhood, there's a lot of older people there, and so the concern is just undue traffic in the area, undue noise after hours. So we're wondering what the hours of operation for these chargers would be, who will have access to that? Will the hours of operation pertain to the Christ Fellowship's authorized hours of operation? Because I've looked at EV chargers in the city, and for example, it can take like eight hours sometimes to charge on the EV2s, to fully charge. So our concern is, are people going to be coming in the middle of the night? Because we see the activity level rise around noon time, we see it rise around late hours, like 1, 2, 3 AM, and it could also be early in the morning. So are there going to be some limits on that? And what's going to happen with people who are there? Because usually, people are looking to do something, sometimes they may choose to play football, or throw frisbees, or whatever. Is there going to be consideration for the neighborhoods involved?
Thank you so much. If you want to be seated, we'll have the petitioner speak. Thank you so much.
I got to be honest, in terms of the hours of operation, I actually did not think that question would come up, so. But for the location of the EV chargers, we have to get this approved by staff. The location has not been decided on yet. So when we submit for the location of these EV chargers, I'm sure that staff will include in the condition of approval, something along the lines of including the hours of operation for these chargers as well, too.
Let's have the staff respond, please.
There's a condition of approval that requires that the EV spaces come in at a designated location, and staff always reviews the location with consideration of the public health, safety, and welfare. So we will continue to do so as we review all locations of all EV chargers in commercial, light industrial, governmental land uses throughout our city. So we will take a look at that. In respect to security concerns, I can't speak to that. That's really more of a private management issue of the property. But I can say that EV chargers are very common, they're quite prolific, they fall very much in line with sustainability principles. Christ Fellowship has done a very good job managing their site in terms of security. I'm sure they will continue to do so, and staff has the opportunity to review the locations in the condition of approval, as I previously described.
All right. Let's do this. Let's close the hearing, so we can go ahead and have counsel weigh in as well. So I'm going to close the hearing, make it a motion and a second to approve, to bring it back to discussion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024.
Thank you, guys. Mayor, a second?
Second.
All right. Let's go. Any questions?
So I'm guessing that the EV charging stations will be used by the patrons, the people that visit the church, and employees of the church, correct?
Yes. Correct.
And obviously, does the church have existing security that roams? I know sometimes I see them when there's large events.
Yes.
And so I would imagine that they would
Yep.
Obviously, make sure that these are within a secure and protected area, I would imagine. And then, I guess that's it as far as the EV charging stations. And I think that, you know, when this does come to fruition, and I learn the locations from the site plan, I'm happy to reach out and let you know where they are located.
Thanks, Marcy. Bert?
Yeah. I'm assuming there's no charging stations now on the site?
Correct.
This is the first new one, so, okay.
Correct.
And I think Christ Fellowship has pretty good exterior security, too, around their buildings, so it's, I think it's just going to be a positioning play of where staff wants those to go, to make sure we're not affecting any of the residents to the west or to the north.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
I don't have any questions, they took my questions.
All right.
I'm going to leave it alone as well. I think staff has the ability to make those choices on what's sensitive to the community, so I'm going to vote for it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Let's bring it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing where those get located. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to Resolution 21. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 212024, Resolution, the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a public-private partnership agreement with Palm Beach North Athletic Foundation Incorporated, a Florida not-for-profit corporation, to develop an indoor recreational facility at Plant Drive Park, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty. Let's go ahead and open the hearing, but before I go any further.
Madam Mayor, I do need to recuse myself. The company that my husband works for has been hired to do the site planning and surveying for this facility.
All right. Thank you so much. Councilmember Tinsley, we'll see you in a minute. Hello, Kumra.
Good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor. Congratulations on your three-peat.
Thank you.
Do you know what that means?
Yeah, three times in a row.
Three-peat.
Three times in a row.
It's basketball season, right? We're into it now.
I'll take it. Thank you.
Anyway, for the record, Kumra, Protestant on Contracts Director, and the resolution before you this evening is a public-private partnership agreement for the development of an indoor recreational facility at Plant Drive Park. With me is Charlotte Przynski, our Leisure Services Administrator, who will add some additional information to my presentation to help you make a decision. So as you know, the city owns and operates a public park at Plant Drive, and the park has a skate park and some other facilities. It has, for several years, regardless of the upgrades the city has done, has been a marginal recreational facility for the city. The park is underutilized, and all the amenities have been retrofitted, however, the park attracts vandalism and misuse. So Palm Beach North Athletic Foundation approached the city and offered to develop and operate an indoor recreational facility on the premises. And you probably remember Palm Beach North from District Park, and the plan to build an ice rink there. This is a similar proposal, but it's a lot less intense, and it is primarily ice rinks. So they will develop, they will design, construct, operate, and maintain the facility. And the project requires the demolition of the existing amenities of the park and the construction of the ice rinks. The state of Florida has very precise, missing the N, very precise procedures for public-private partnerships, especially those that are unsolicited. So the city has to, when the city got the unsolicited proposal from Palm Beach North, we had to advertise, the law requires us to advertise it once a week for three weeks in a newspaper of local distribution, and also in the Florida Administrative Register. We advertised it for once a week, for four weeks. We also put it in the Florida Administrative Register for once a week, for four weeks. And what that does is, we generally just say that the city has received a proposal for this facility at Plant Drive Park, and if there's anybody that's out there who has a similar project, they can submit. It allows anybody else to submit for consideration. The whole process is covered by the cone of silence. So in addition to the requirements of the law, there's a cone of silence to protect the integrity of the process, and to prevent any kind of undue influences, and any kind of, to destroy the confidentiality of somebody who comes to you, a private entity who comes to the city with a project and says, "Hey, here's an idea I have, I don't need this broadcast all over the place," until you decide to move forward. Subsequently, after we advertised the project, and advertised that we had received this unsolicited proposal from Palm Beach North, we received one additional proposal that we had to look at, and we did look at that proposal. And the city's evaluation team, which comprises the city manager, the deputy city managers, the stakeholders like recreation, finance, everybody looked at it, we met them, we looked at it, and we decided that Palm Beach North presented a project that we didn't have that facility yet in the city, and it would be a good idea, irrespective of what happened at District Park, irrespective of that. So the city intends to execute a peace agreement with Palm Beach North, and the city will have no financial obligations for the project. It's all been funded by Palm Beach North. The facility will be constructed at one time, because when we did District Park, the idea was to phase that project, where there's no phasing of this project, it's all going to be one time. And because of lessons learned on District Park, the city attorney, myself, the entire project team, massage the terms and conditions to ensure that we didn't start knocking down a park, an existing park, and then everything gets stopped, because we didn't want it to happen. So the Palm Beach North has six months to show they have a certain set of money, and then a total of 15 months to show they have all the money before they start demolishing anything, because we clearly don't want to be halfway through something and then we're stuck, and we get all kinds of criticisms. If the milestones for the funding are not met, the agreement is terminated. It's a default, and the agreement is terminated, and there's no way to cure that. So we won't get into this process of, okay, we're going to give you another three months, another three months, and then five years down the line, nothing happens. The indoor recreational facility will include a variety of indoor-related amenities and a family restaurant, etc. I'm going to show you some pretty pictures that will give you an idea of what we're talking about. At the end of the term, the city will own the facility as required by Florida law, and the estimated cost is between $40 and $50 million. What's going on in construction, we don't know what the prices are going to be, they could come down, they could go up, because steel has plunged in the last three years. The facility takes about two to three years to complete. So as you know, this is where Plant Drive Park is, this is Lila Park, which has been turned into a pickleball center. This is a conceptual site plan and additional parking areas, so that means that the existing pickleball courts will go away. This is a conceptual site plan of the ground floor, and this is approximately two and a half sheets of ice. So again, this is a lot less intense than what we saw at District Park. And so this sheet is for the little weeny ones who are learning to skate, or people like myself who have never skated, who may want to go slider on the ice, you know? There are concessions like a pro shop, a party room, skate rental, et cetera. And then upstairs, looking down, so it's a two-story structure, you will have like physiotherapy and fitness and those other associated sports bar and grill. This is an exterior rendering, conceptual exterior rendering. This is an interior rendering. It's another interior rendering showing the ice rink, one of the ice rinks. Palm Beach North is a private not-for-profit, and the founder and principal is Michael Winter, who's here tonight, if you have any questions of him. And staff recommends approval. As I said at the start, Charlotte will add some additional information to this, so that you can properly make a decision.
Thank you, Kumra.
No problem.
Good evening, Charlotte.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, and congratulations on your appointments. Staff understands that there are maybe some concerns over the impact of the park, especially the Amanda Buckley Memorial, the high school softball field, and just generally with the continued improvements of the Lake Catherine Softball Park, which, by the way, for those of you who remember, there is a field dedicated at Lake Catherine to Tori, which was Amanda's dad. Tonight, with the possible approval, this project is only at the first step. So we have been in communication with the high school athletic director, the PBG YA softball program, to keep them apprised as this project has moved through the process. We have spoken to them about the ability to make those things whole, honor the memorial, but we're not there yet. As Kumra just explained, this is just the first step. Should not there yet. As Kumra just explained, this is just the first step. Should you choose to approve? They have to get through the funding model. Once that's done, staff is already thinking about what we do to make these things whole and do it in the right way. As you know, every facility that we build in this city is done to the utmost care and quality that you could possibly build a recreation facility. If we move forward, we're gonna engage those stakeholders. We've already been speaking again to the high school and to the Y-A-A, but we will talk to them once we know we need to. But we do it right, and that's what we've conveyed to them. So I just wanted to share that. We understand the impact. I personally knew Tori and Amanda. A lot of us here on the staff have, and we will be very respectful of that, and we will do it the right way. Just wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. All right, so I'll conclude with the presentations. We do have two comment cards this evening, so the first one is for J. Mike Evans. If you'd be so kind, just come up to the podium, sir.
Good evening. This is the first time I've ever spoken.
Okay, you're gonna do great.
Thanks. So I'm gonna do my best. I can't promise you that it's gonna be great, but...
Okay, you're out of time. Just kidding. If you could state your name and your address.
My name is Michael Evans. I live in Five Craymore Terrace in Palm Beach Gardens. It's in PGA National. Before we get started, for the sake of transparency, I hope you, like, give me an extra minute so I can just explain about myself and, you know, how I'm, how I have connections to all of this stuff before we do, if that's okay with you.
We'll give you extra time if you need it, but please go ahead.
First of all, my daughter plays for Palm Beach Gardens High School softball team, so she plays at the school, at the park there. She also plays for the travel program that rents the fields from June through the rest of the year because she wants to play in college. So I have a vested interest just in that because that's my daughter, and I spend a lot of time there. I've spent a lot of time with the PBG Y-A on boards and everything else, and softball and all that stuff. So getting that out of the way, I just wanted to be clear that you know that I have a vested interest in all of this. I have a vested interest, and I'm satisfied that, hey, if we're gonna build something, if we're gonna take this and destroy this park and move it to Palm Beach Gardens High School, it has to be built the right way, what all of the community spent all of this money and time and people to build this great facility there, over there. It can't be just some cheap thing, here you go, right? That's just not fair to the kids. It's not fair to the family. It's not fair to anyone. So, but aside from that, first of all, I feel like selling a park to a developer to build, and I know they say that they're a not-for-profit, but everything is for profit. The city is making $75,000 a year plus a year renting out this facility to the, or that property to that organization. It's just a bad idea. These are green spaces that our forefathers built here for us to use, for the people to use. You are building a park in the poorest community of this city. That area around the high school is the absolutely poorest community in Palm Beach Gardens, which is not a very poor community, but that is it. And you're taking away their free basketball courts. You've already taken away their free pickleball courts. You're taking away everything that they have, their skate park and all of that, to build a for-profit hockey rink. Do you know how much a hockey rec program costs? Our average rec program to play soccer, baseball, softball, you name it, is about $180. For a kid to play hockey, the cheapest I found in Florida was $700. The average was $850 per kid, per season, for a rec season. That's unaffordable for the kids in that area. Where are they gonna go? Are you gonna tell them, oh, you gotta go somewhere else? That's not what this community was built on. We didn't, they didn't, they built these green spaces so that people could go play. The pickleball courts are now for profit, and that's okay.
If you could summarize, sir.
You know, once you get rid of it, you never get it back. They don't wanna be, the ice skating people don't wanna be there. They don't wanna be in the North County Park. That's where they were supposed to be, and they really wanna be there. And they're gonna tell you something else now because they're begging at straws to get it, but I think that that's ridiculous. That's an undeveloped parcel. Let them have it. If this passes, I think that immediately we should form, or there should be a committee formed to discuss how we're gonna move Amanda Buckley Field to Palm Beach Gardens. That's a real thing. That needs to be discussed with everybody. Non-transparent, I don't want the city deciding it on their own without all of the people involved that built this thing to put it over there, and I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
I really am. I just think that it needs to be done in a respectful way and not just say, here you go, boom, you're done. Okay? I went to school there. I know some of you guys went to school there. I have a lot of pride, and, you know, it's tough. It's not the greatest school. What the school board did to this city is brutal.
All right, we're gonna ask you to go ahead and conclude your comments, please. If you do have another comment card, so I wanna make sure everyone has equal time.
That's really it. That's just all I wanted to say. Thank you for listening to me.
I appreciate it. We appreciate it.
And I hope that you consider what I had to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Next card is for Mark Marciano. If you'd, former mayor, hello, sir. If you can come on up to the podium, you know what to do.
Yes, hi, Mark Marciano, Ten Sheldrake Lane, Palm Beach Gardens. Congratulations, Mayor Reed, on another term. I'm glad that the council as a whole, and congratulations, Vice Mayor, as well. So a couple things. First of all, sorry for two things. One, for being here two meetings in a row. I didn't really ever want to come back to the meetings because I didn't think me sitting back there is something you all wanted to see, but here I am anyway. And two, for being late tonight and missing your vote, but I have a reason for it. I was actually at home. As I was getting ready to leave, I was flipping through the channels, and my favorite sports movie, Val Time, was on, Miracle. And I thought, wow, what a time. I haven't seen that movie in over 10 years. I don't think it's been on TV in over 10 years, and there it was. And I couldn't leave watching the USA beat Russia. So, kind of ironic, maybe a little prophetic, but I'm here to speak in support of Resolution 21, and I understand some of the concerns that our residents have about open green space. But, you know, when I ran for office back in 2017, one of the things that was a constant was some of the moms and some of the families talking about the need for indoor recreation for the kids in the city, because everything is outdoors. You can't take your kids to the pool every day. You can't go to the beach every day. You can't go to the park. It's too hot. We needed indoor recreation. I really do hope to see an indoor recreational facility at District Park, but this is a separate project that can offer indoors facilities to our kids and to our community, which I think is very important. Also, when I look at the city and I see the recreational opportunities for our kids and those in the neighborhoods around us, even in the unincorporated parts of neighboring to our city, we have the best of soccer fields, baseball fields, golf, pickleball, and tennis. Having an indoor sports facility with ice rinks just adds another element, another opportunity for our kids to explore a different opportunity. And I know that the foundation is gonna have a lot of opportunities for children in our community that may not be able to afford to play ice hockey. This isn't just about, you know, being able to afford or being able to generate more revenues for the foundation. This is a foundation that's also giving back. And by the way, I am not paid by the foundation. I am not a board member. I am not affiliated in any way. This was a project that came to us when I was on council, and I feel very strongly that this is gonna round out our opportunity to really make such a great recreational department for our city. So I ask you all to support it. I wanna thank the staff for working with the foundation to make sure that the staff put provisions in there that protects the city from any financial risk. I feel very confident that the foundation has developed a stronger financial model with stronger financial support, and also some great people behind it, including the best hockey player of all time, Wayne Gretzky, and maybe, just maybe, the next Michael Ruzioni comes right here from Palm Beach Gardens. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. That's it for comment cards, so I'm going to close the hearing, and we'll look for a motion in a second to approve and then bring it back for discussion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 202024.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Let's bring it back for discussion. So do we have any comments or questions from council? Let's start with Carl, yeah.
I am going to wait till the last.
Okay, you got it. Let's move on down. Whoever wants to go next, please do.
I'll go next. Thanks. Thank you, Kumra and Charlotte, for your comments in the presentation. I followed the project from when it was a consideration at the North District Park. I know that there's a lot of people who are wanting this, and there are a lot of people who have very, very different opinions on it. I appreciate, Charlotte, your comments on the consideration for the Buckleys and things that are there currently, and taking great care in, you know, consideration and communication with everyone involved and treating it with kid gloves. So I appreciate that, and I do take that into consideration because that was definitely one of my questions. And Kumra, thanks for, you know, the presentation, and I like the checks and balances that the city has with making sure that the monies are there and there's no shovel in the ground before, you know, it's ready and it's going to be implemented to its fruition, because we don't want, you know, to start something and not finish it in the right kind of way. So, you know, I'm for it. I think it's something that the city would round out our sports and recreation nicely, and I appreciate all the thoughts and comments that went into putting this together. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, Bert?
Ooh, I don't know where to start on this one. I've lived in the neighborhood Mr. Evans mentioned for almost 50 years. Kind of walking to Plant Drive was what I did growing up, playing baseball on that field before it was a softball field. Back in the 70s, it was the only senior field we had in town, so that's kind of where I had to walk and play and then walk home. As I told staff the other day, I met my future wife there 40 years ago on that field playing co-ed softball. So there's a lot of good memories of Plant Drive for me, and it's not an easy decision to kind of, to move this forward for me, but I am supportive. And I think when I look back, I look back when I was six years old in the early 70s, and we played baseball at Lake Catherine, and we used to have open fields and cars would be basically, the fences in the outfield would be cars, and the ball went into the car, you had to raise your hand because you had to stop play. And then I realized over the years, Lake Catherine went away because residential construction was built there, and they took our fields away. Then they built the softball fields across the street to counter. And then I realized also that the city made a concentrated effort years ago to really focus recreation within the inner areas of our city, with the high school connecting to the, now the pickleball courts, to the baseball across the street, community center, the Burns Road complex, the city hall. And that's kind of the way I look at this now, is, as Dr. Marciano said, trying to put together now a different venue in that area. Although the area, no disrespect, Mike, I mean, it's a beautiful area. I've lived there my whole life, and I will never leave. But people will go to the center, and I think if it's built right, I think it'll be very successful. And I agree with you 100%, and Charlotte knows this pretty wholeheartedly for me, that we will be supportive of whatever needs to be done to relocate anything related to the Buckley Memorial to our high school or potentially Lake Catherine, wherever it needs to be. But I encourage the school to stay engaged with our staff. A lot of times, our staff can reach out to these different areas, and I really don't want to get involved in all that school board crap that goes on. But sometimes they drop the ball, they don't get involved, or they don't basically accept what we're trying to do on a municipal standpoint to help because of bureaucracy, and I think we need to get around that early in the process. Form a committee, as you talk about, amongst the Y-A-A and the softball people, and stay engaged with Charlotte on questions as this comes to fruition. And if it does, it's 15 months. And if it does happen, it will happen. If it doesn't happen, we continue to move on and leave Plant Drive Park as it is. So, again, a lot of emotion for me because I've used that park my whole life, but I realize there's changes, and it happens in our city, and we're hoping that this is gonna be another upgrade to our facilities and what we can bring and offer to our residents. So I will support. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert. I don't know if I could add much more as a lifelong resident here as well. These are hard decisions to make, but Mr. Evans, I would encourage you to please stay engaged with this process. I've gotten to see Charlotte and our staff work through things like this before, and what we meant, what we said about being a representational democracy. We are here to represent you, and so we want to hear from you. So please, please, please stay engaged in this, and I like what Bert said as well. So let's bring it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. We're going to move on to our last item tonight, which is our items for council action and discussion. First, we'll start, once Marcy gets settled back in again, with appointments to our external boards and committees. So just bear with me one moment. I've got my pink fire hat. Ready for anything? Here we go. Does everyone on council have a copy or need a copy of our board appointments? All right, Patty, I'm just gonna go through it. You tell me if there's anything that we need to stop for. Palm Beach County League of Cities, our current appointee is our previous Vice Mayor Woods. Right. Okay, sorry. So I get to be president of that, you guys, in May. I hope you're coming to the swearing in.
Yes.
Looking forward to a really good year. I do not need to be the appointee, though, by any means. Who would like to come along for the fun that is League of Cities? Don't all get so excited that you... Carl?
It's funny that I never saw you there. I'll be happy to do it.
Okay, so we've got Tinsley for our appointee for Palm Beach County League of Cities. North County Intergovernmental meets every three months. Generally speaking, it's the mayor or the city manager, so if we're okay, we'll go along with that. We have Carl as the alternate. Are we, anyone want to come along for that one as the alternate? Okay, thank you, Carl. Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, I go there often and get to still keep chairing it luckily as well. And Marcy's been a great alternate. Will you please stay on as alternate? Would you care to?
I'll be happy to.
All right. Seacoast Utility Authority is generally Mr. Ferris. Mr. Ferris, I'm assuming you'll be continuing in that? I would wish you would, please, no, you don't get it. We'll have our city manager, no, sir, denied.
Is there supposed to be an alternate appointed to that, or no? No?
All right. Palm Beach Workforce Alliance Consortium with Career Source, also love that board. I'm happy to stick around. The meetings are brief, and I, they did reach out to me directly, so I don't know if that's something that...
Let's leave it.
Let's leave it. Leave it as, and Dana, are you okay as alternate?
Yes.
And economic development as well.
All right, so Palm Beach North Economic Development Committee, oh yeah, that's Dana. You're good there?
I'm good.
All right, so Bert, are you comfortable as alternate? Okay, so, and that also goes for government affairs, and Dana, thank you. You've done a great job of that this year. Thank you so much. So Palm Beach North Government Affairs Committee, we've got, Dana, would you like to stay on?
Sure, yes, please.
All right, so the alternate, now this meets the second Friday of the month. It's usually a Zoom call with a presentation, and then each municipality gives an update. So if you guys are gonna be the alternate, there are, you know, I'm sure there'll be a time when Dana may not be able to do it, so plan on a Friday at 8:00 AM. And don't all jump in. Who, I guess we're all alternates for that one. Okay, so Dana, just give us a text message if you ever can't make it. All right, thank you so much. Locksahatchee River Coordinating Council. All right, and we have an alternate as Vice Mayor Middleton. Would you want to keep that or pass that along?
Sure.
Okay, great. Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council that is appointed, so I'll stick around there. Debbie Cersey is my alternate. And then the Multi Jurisdictional Issues Coordination Forum, that's currently the mayor, and that will all stick along. Who would like to be the alternate? Do we switch it for the Vice Mayor typically?
Yep, Dana.
Dana, you're up. All right.
Because they meet so many times.
Patty, you got it all? All right, that's it. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to share this evening?
Just the city attorney report.
No, I mean from council. Any other items of discussion?
Nothing negative.
All right. Max, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, thank you. Again, congratulations to you and Vice Mayor Middleton on your appointments. Congratulations to all of you for your external board appointments, which I'm sure you'll enjoy going to. You'll see in front of you, I provided a letter in front of you that I proposed sending, to have the, seeking your authorization, your approval of authorizing the mayor to sign it, to incent the governor to say, and as to encourage him to sign CSHB 479 into law, which is the Alternative Mobility Funding System legislation that we worked so hard on this year to get passed. It's, Senate Bill 688 was subsumed into this. CS stands for Consolidated Bill, so they consolidated 688 into HB 479, and you can read there what I've drafted to be put under the mayor's signature to encourage, again, the mayor, the governor to sign the bill and to recognize...